At seven oh one.
Lori Krasny.
Here.
Tom Heck.
Here.
Scott Fischel.
Here.
Belinda Gracie.
Here.
Jennifer Harden.
Here.
Can we say for the legions?
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, motion to approve the meeting minutes from December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Can I get a second?
Second.
Black hole, any discussion? Sorry. Oh my gosh, thank you. First of all, welcome, and on behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I'd like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section of the agenda. Thank you. All right, so Mr. Heck had seconded the motion to approve the meeting minutes from December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Any discussion? Can you call the roll?
Lori Krasny.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Scott Fischel.
Abstain.
Belinda Gracie.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Motion carried. Motion to approve the meeting minutes from January fifth, twenty-two thousand twenty-two tax budget due, January fifth, two thousand twenty-two organizational meeting, and January fifth, two thousand twenty-two special meeting. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Can you call the roll?
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Scott Fischel.
Aye.
Belinda Gracie.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Lori Krasny.
Aye. Motion carried. And special reports?
You have them.
No special reports? Any old business? All right, new business?
Yeah, I have something, and I had, just as a heads up, I had forwarded this proposed policy to everybody a little bit earlier, and so let me read it, and then, just so everybody knows, when the Board does a policy under regular order, it's proposed at a meeting, and then it's at the next meeting that the policy is voted on. So, this is strictly to bring this up, and I guess we decide to have conversation or discussion now or next month when there would actually be a vote. But here's the proposed policy. It'd be policy zero seven, excuse me, zero one seven five point two, preparation for school board conferences, conventions, and workshops. When a board member may be requesting to cast a vote on behalf of the board at an upcoming conference, convention, or workshop, the board member shall first present the matter to the board no later than the monthly meeting, monthly board meeting occurring before the conference, convention, or workshop. Once presented, the board shall decide whether and in what manner to authorize the board member to vote on behalf of the board at the upcoming conference, convention, or workshop, and the board member shall vote as authorized. The authorization shall be by resolution approved by a majority of the full board. The vote of each board member shall be recorded in the meeting minutes. In the absence of board authorization, the board member shall cast only an abstention vote.
So, does anybody have any questions?
No, I'm assuming that you had legal counsel where you were.
I did, absolutely.
I think, actually, I don't think it's a bad policy, you know, when I went down to OSBA in November, I had almost thought the same thing, which is, we didn't even talk about that, do you know what I'm saying? And so, I think it's a good addition to our board policy.
That's the example that came to mind when you went to OPA, but my question would be then, when you were down there, though, there was discussion during that meeting and some changes to what you were voting on, so I, I don't know if we need to think through that piece, right? So, we, you had information, but then when you get down there, you're discussing it with all the other school boards. In that example, where they made some adjustments to the material craft, they did. So, I guess we're saying if it would be in the general reference of what were agreed upon, or?
I think potentially, I mean, I think frankly, because that the delegates that go represents the full board, it would only make sense to me that if modifications were made, that the vote would not occur until after the boards have had a chance to meet.
Yeah, so that's, I think that's what the intended purpose of having those individuals down there is to do, is to actually like, listen to what those modifications are and then make a vote. The vote down there is not, they don't count it per se by district. It was pretty informal, you get a green card and you hold it up, and it was, it was interesting because this meeting was quite controversial, there was a lot of discussion that went on back and forth, ultimately, some of the things that they had requested had failed. And then there are things that come up from the floor as well, there are also resolutions that are coming up from the floor, there are some things, and so those are discussed as well, so you've got to kind of either be prepared to vote or don't vote, they're not going to know if you don't vote or not, because like, like I said, they're not counting them, but, you know, they're.
So, it's, so as I recall, at least on one of the measures, they had to have seventy-five percent approval in order for it to be approved, and I saw somewhere along the way that was seventy-three point two percent, so that.
I don't know how they would get the percentage, they didn't count, they counted that three times. We had to vote numerous times.
Yeah, yeah, so I, but, I mean, so, I mean, unless they had some sort of a tally of who was there, whether they or not they made a form, which I'm sure they did, then the question is, how, if you need seventy-five percent, how do you definitively determine that? So, that seems a little, maybe that their policies need to be tightened up to make it a little bit more understandable and concrete when, when there's a vote.
One would, you know, one would think that there probably should have been some electronic type of voting available, you know, but they don't have that.
Or even a ballot, I mean, whatever, a secret ballot or whatever, but.
So.
That was my only question, and I don't know if you have another example of, like, when you thought about adding this policy, an example of something coming up or something that you participated in, because that was the one I thought of.
That's the only one that I know of, I mean, we don't really attend any.
So, I, I think that, that was the only one that I really, that came to mind, but I really, I guess, you know, whoever would represent the board at the meeting, they would be acting on their own behalf potentially, and that, so we'd have to work through language or something that would allow us to authorize the, our delegate within certain parameters of what to do, and if it ends up being outside of those parameters, then the abstention vote would have to be cast, I think, but that's, that is, that is unfortunate that they, you know, that, it seems to me that there needs to be consultation with other board members to really have the official opinion of what the members of the OSBA say, and it's the boards that are members, not individuals per se. So, that seems to be a little backwards.
We do get the information in advance, it doesn't come very much in advance, but it comes prior to, I don't, Carrie, does that come with the packet of information that's coming with our registration materials that probably come, you know, with two weeks at a time? I don't remember when it exactly comes, but it arrived in my inbox.
Well, that might be a concern also, that if we're getting it two weeks before, we may not have the material.
I mean, we can probably, you know, we have a special meeting, we should, you know, we should discuss it.
Right, I think we should, so, so certainly, we need to make it work, but I also think that we need to have our opinions recorded, and then, and then to go from there as best we can, and I don't, whatever, we can mull it over, but that is a perplexing situation if motions are made from the floor of the convention or the conference, and what do we do in those circumstances?
And I would agree, you know, it's, that agenda that they put forward and whatever, it's their, it's their legislative platform, it's the things that they're going to go and advocate on our behalf, and some of the things were surprising that were in there that, you know, that they were asking us to vote on and whatever, and they, again, like I said, were controversial, so it would probably be a good idea to get board input before one person goes and makes a vote on that information.
And then maybe this would be a start of, what they could do is, is ask for input prior to the convention, the meeting, the conference, and so, and then not have anything from the floor, all the floor proposals should be made perhaps beforehand, and a list should be made of them, so that that can be circulated prior to the meeting itself, so that boards would have a chance.
I want to get their practice for you, because I know that they do, everybody has access to that material in advance, they have the platform addendums prior to, every board member has that information, I don't know where they keep it, if it's on their, if it's on their website, whatever, but like, the, any changes that boards would like to make, they can discuss those, they can propose those adjustments, and they have to be submitted to OSB prior to that meeting, so they do, there is a, there is a method for that, so.
Okay, and then that would be, I mean, it is a little complicated, but I still think that, that, you know, we need to be transparent, and everybody, everybody should understand what's being proposed, and we should vote as a board on what, what we have consensus on.
I agree, absolutely.
Any other discussion?
So, will that, so will that be, as a matter of like, board agenda items, will we put that on as a proposed, like, first read next board meeting, are we putting that on for a first read this board meeting?
You can put it on, I believe, the first reading at this board meeting, you can add that, Carrie, can't you?
We have a work session next week, so we can easily put it on next week's work session and go on to regular February meetings.
It was February first, correct?
Uh, third.
Is the reading considered a special meeting at all, or no?
What's that?
Is that just the reading, a special meeting, or no? Because we're not taking action on it, are we?
As of right now, no, we haven't put the notice out for the meeting yet, so it's on, like, we didn't find the official notice, we always add the first reading of policy.
I thought we were okay to use this as the first read.
Yeah, we could, too.
Okay. Is there any concern with that? Did you have other discussion I thought you said?
I had one item.
Okay.
There's a group called the Men of Honor in Leroy Township, and they would like to add a scholarship to Riverside High School, so just announce that today, and then details can follow at another meeting.
So, Scott, if they're interested in doing that, both Belinda and I serve on RLEF, which is the Riverside Local Excellence in Education Foundation, and we actually manage to help maintain the scholarships, maintain the scholarships, so that'd be a great way for them to do that, we help, we get the promotion of it on the website, and I've actually established two scholarships in the last few years, so if they have any questions or want to run it through RLEF, we can easily manage that for them, too.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, well, I'll bring some more details, and then we can go from there.
Excuse me, I'm so sorry. Out of his. Something. He'll want to drink water.
Any other new business? For the Board of Education Committee and Liaison Report. Give me one second, because they will change, I want to make sure I get the right person. Yeah, that's okay. Oh, thank you.
Chee-chee.
So, for the Superintendent's Business Advisory Liaison, I did have a chance to meet with Dr. Vaseg and get an update on what is going on with our Business Advisory Council. We talked about adding a few members of the Business Advisory Council that will help round out the group, also making sure that the BAC represents the reflection of our community and our school, and work to build connections with the military branches, police and fire departments, and involve them in the BAC also. Also, he is right now working with the Science Leadership Group, first-year students, and we're looking to have the Business Advisory Council meet with the Science Leadership students sometime in February, probably February fifteenth or the twenty-second, to have some interaction. So, that's the update. Any questions?
Sounds good.
Curriculum or Programming Committee and Alumni Association Liaison, Mr. Fischel.
We had a curriculum meeting on Tuesday, and the Curriculum Director, Ms. Malacher, gave an update on some new courses, and one of them is Career Exploration, it's an eighth grade course, it's a mandatory elective, it's a one semester and a half a high school credit, and AP Environmental Science, ninth to twelfth grade course, it's a full year, one-credit elective, war, fourth year of science, fourth of science, math courses, quantitative reasoning, discrete math, computer science, data science foundations, and that'll be an Algebra II equivalent, career-based intervention, tenth grade course, and the reason, as I understand it, for this course is, some of the students should be in eleventh grade, but they're still in tenth grade, so to try and help them achieve at a little bit higher level, this will be offered, it'll be a full year, two periods, class, three credits. There's a work-based learning credit, this will be tenth through twelfth grade course, if you will, a semester, it's a half a credit elective, and it'll be a hundred twenty hours worked per semester for that credit. There'll be a pop culture class, this is for ninth through twelfth grade, it'll be a semester course, half a credit, fine arts elective, offered in the second semester, and the goal is to have twenty-five students in, with, in each of two classes, so it won't start out there, but it'll start, and then hopefully fill out as years go by. And then Senior Only Programs, Principles of Business, twelfth grade course, a full year, one-period course, one-credit, it's an elective, and this will occur at the school store. There's Advanced Manufacturing, it's a twelfth grade course, it's a full year, one-period, one-credit elective, and the students will be able to earn safety credentials, and there will be a Megatronics machine experience involved with that. Then we have the Welding, it's a twelfth grade course, full year, two periods, two credits, and it's an elective, and then there are other districts that have programs that our students have the opportunities to go to, and one is at Perry High School, it's construction, and the other one is EMT at Mener, and that's as you can get in, the spots are limited. I did a presentation of, at the curriculum meeting also, and, and the presentation was on Responsive Classroom. I was called a few weeks ago by our Superintendent, Jim Kalis, and our Curricular Director, Ms. Malacher, and they asked me why I thought Responsive Classroom is a low-level CRT. I told them I would give a presentation at the first curriculum meeting, and they said okay. I have well over a hundred hours of research, and my wife also has assisted as well with over a hundred hours of her own research. The reason we have so many hours is because we started our research when I decided to run for the board back in August. I gave a presentation about CRT and Responsive Classroom on Tuesday, it probably took about fifteen to twenty minutes, with all the research we did, it could have gone at least another hour. I did a refined presentation highlighting the bullet points of CRT and Responsive Classroom. In the presentation, I showed how CRT is about equity, then I, then I presented Responsive Classroom. On their website, Responsive Classroom mentions equity twenty-five times, and that's just on three pages alone. SEL, which is Social Emotional Learning, is another main topic in those pages. Further, in the Responsive Classroom Teacher's Manual, they instruct the teachers that teaching SEL is just as important as teaching academics. That's a one-to-one correlation, meaning one is not more important than the other. That means Responsive Classroom is directing the teachers in their training to spend half their time teaching the kids about their social condition and their emotional condition and the development thereof, and the other half of their time teaching academics. No, I think our scores aren't good enough to only be teaching academics half the day, this is my opinion. I have a quote from a parent, and this parent is Ms. Cooper. Ms. Cooper is a parent in Loudoun County, Virginia, School District, and what she says perfectly encapsulates this subject. Ms. Cooper said the principal and teacher at her daughter's school were transparent and helpful when she raised her concerns about CRT. However, no one could promise me that critical race theory would not be taught, that's because CRT isn't packaged as such when it is transmitted in school classrooms, rather, it is disseminated under different guises that have evolved over time, from culturally responsive learning to equity, and now social emotional learning, and that's exactly what's going on here. That's the curriculum update. Oh, one more item, there's some more that we need to go over in curriculum as time ran out, and we have another meeting on Monday to complete that, and then we'll be updated at the next meeting.
Any questions? All right, so Buildings and Grounds Operations Committee, was there anything with alumni?
Oh, I'm sorry, I have not contacted them, I was out of town on vacation for two weeks, I'm back now, and so I'll be contacting them soon.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, Buildings and Grounds Operations Committee and Legislative Liaison, Mr. Heck?
Sure, so we did not have a Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting in January, but we have one scheduled for February ninth at seven thirty, and so that'd be the next one there, and I do not have anything for Legislative Liaison at this time.
Policy Committee and Booster Organization, Mrs. Harden?
We've not had a meeting for policy since we got these new committees, I don't know when the next, when you, Jimmy, are thinking we're going to have the next.
Next, oh, it should be coming in March.
Okay, so March, and as far as boosters go, I've been a couple of emails with them, right now they're just talking about the holiday parties and things like that, classrooms and nothing, no RPTA meeting, I've seen it on the books, and it sounds like they're trying to plan that again next, like last year, right?
Yeah, I believe the ten of the dates is April nine, their, RPTA's supposed to meet again in February, but we haven't, they haven't set an exact date yet.
Okay. Nebia?
I think I'll call my first post for a father-daughter dance, like a week before Valentine's.
Oh, good.
All right, Superintendent's Report.
Yeah, but here, did you take the, in front of your sign?
On the side of your.
Oh, I missed, yeah.
Let's start with our COVID update. Okay, since the beginning of the school year, these are the numbers, that represent the number of cases, there were seven hundred and seventy-three throughout the district, they're broken down by each building, they're listed there, obviously, the building with the most population has the most confirmed COVID cases. This is a, just a visual of the COVID cases as well, as you can see, there was a spike of COVID reporting after two weeks of not being in session. We had the same thing, pretty much to a lesser degree, with Thanksgiving break. We did get some calls from people who were saying that because there's a spike, what are we going to do about it? I tried to remind the people that were contacting me that this all occurred when we weren't even in session at school, and what happens is, no one reports it until they come back, it's like a weekend, you know, if you're infected sometime Friday or Saturday or Sunday, usually it's Monday that they report, okay? Well, we had two weeks of winter break, and that's why it's so high. Only, the last part on this graph is a representation of only Monday and Tuesday of this week. Next slide is pretty interesting. These are all the school districts in Lake County. If you look closely, you're going to find that we're the third lowest amount of cases out of the nine school districts. Madison, we could not get Madison to respond to us in a timely manner to include them, so I don't know where they land, so let's just say out of the eight that are listed here, we're actually number three. If you look to the far left column, the school districts that are shaded actually have active masking mandates as we speak, but one thing I want to point out is, on Monday, Curtland's Board will be voting on whether it becomes optional, and from what I'm hearing is that they probably will, but who knows? So, the only ones that have lower COVID cases than we do at this point is Painesville and Wicklow. There's quite a spike in some of the larger districts after the holidays. So, at this point, we have, out of our enrollment, fifteen percent of our students and, our students have had confirmed, confirmed case of COVID. These are not active quarantines, it's eight hundred and fourteen. If you look on this next page, it's a visual depiction of the data presented in the previous slide. Something out of the ordinary, in fact, after winter break, we have at least some type of type of decline there in week twenty-one and twenty-two, with twenty-nine cases and then twenty-two, or twenty-two quarant, twenty-nine quarantines and twenty-two quarantines in week twenty-two.
Is there, is there any information anywhere that gives general population percentage of people with a COVID, like, just for comparative purposes, like, okay, so that's fifteen percent or whatever of our student body and staff?
Are you talking outside of school?
Yeah, just like, what's the general population?
Yeah, we can get that information from the county.
Health department.
Yeah, we actually have a meeting with them today, we have some new news, too, about contact tracing, that we want to share with the board, want to make sure we're on the same page, because we are going to probably change a few things in how we report, so long as the board is in agreement with it, and it's probably, might make a couple people frustrated, but the lot of districts are going in that direction. It's not a case-by-case, daily email-out contact tracing, they're working in clusters now, they just want us to report that if there's an outbreak in a small area, like a classroom, you have four to five kids, you know, almost at the same time hitting COVID, they want us to report it to the health department, we'll get to it in a second. This next, this next slide, absences related to COVID remain slightly lower than in the past when reviewing January twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, however, I don't want anyone to get too excited about it, because there are less stringent quarantine guidelines than we had earlier in the school year, but it's not too far off than what it has been throughout, and like I said, the more, the most important number, I believe, is the number of cases that have been reported in our district compared to the number of kids that we have in our district. These are the ODH guidelines, this information was provided to the Lake County Schools this morning, but, and I'm going to read this, so people on, if they're watching this video will actually hear this, but schools may discontinue contact tracing but are expected to assist local health departments with contact tracing, case investigation exposure, notification related to outbreaks or clusters in schools as determined by the local health departments. The Lake County General Health District defined that as four to five cases in a classroom. Also, school districts still need to report positive cases on a weekly basis to the local health departments. And thirdly, Lake County General Health District advised that daily email notifications when longer needed. Positive cases can be reported via website until the Ohio Department of Health amends notification order, which is expected in the near future. Reporting process is subject to change if or when the ODH or Ohio Department of Health amends the order. And I don't know if you want to add anything, Nick is the one that really takes care of all the accounting of cases and quarantines at our website, so he's actively involved up to his neck in chasing this data down.
Yeah, I just would add, you know, our nurses throughout the district have been on absolute overload on a daily basis for the past year and a half, trying to track down cases, investigating, you know, calling five or six people per positive case, you know, based on close contacts, so this is going to be a big help to them, and half the time, by the time we even know of a positive case, the close contacts have, you know, been running around everywhere, so by the time they're contacted, it's, you know, basically what they're, they're doing this is because it's impractical to keep trying to pin everything down, so it's a welcome change, just to open up, you know, the, what the nurses are really here for is to, you know, treat kids and. treat kids and not be on the phone all day, making phone calls.
Doctor Kailas, you guys intend to send out some kind of notification just letting the entire district know that there's gonna be a change to that? And then when do you expect to change it, the daily reporting to?
We were talking about it today. I'm assuming possibly beginning of next week.
We, we're potentially gonna send something out tomorrow with information, with basically this kind of information.
Good.
And start the new protocol on Monday.
Okay.
And Dr. Malacar can stop yelling at me every day about some of your emails.
How much longer do I have to wait till he stops tweeting emails? That's hard to be yelling.
I, I, I think that they've been going out for so long that people really aren't even reading them, quite honestly. It's like a, oh, here's another one. I don't know that how much, although they're that effective in any way, so.
Just a question, so I, I think I get the kind, the concept of only following clusters. From, from our general experience, and obviously we haven't really tracked it this way, are we seeing, is this really going to reduce things? Are we seeing clusters currently, or is it kind of onesies, twosies in classrooms?
Not in a classroom. I, Mr. Slick and I were talking earlier today. I think there was one instance in particular that we recall a couple of months ago where there was like four kids in the choir standing, you know, in front of each other who all got it. And, but other than that, I can't think of.
And really, the reporting that the Department of Health is actually asking for now is sort of like when we had flu outbreaks. You know, when we got to a certain level, we contact them, they kind of give us guidance as to, oh, maybe we should do this, maybe we should do that. It's really that more or less. So if we have four or five cases, we contact them, and then they kind of say, well, let's take a look at what's going on. It's, it's, it's much more in line with the way we used to handle any other type of illness that kind of started to spread.
Okay, so then this is potentially a, a way of taking some of the pressure off of our nurses while, while still basically being able to manage the school and keep it moving forward.
And truly, with the new guidance of five days and returning five days, by the time you contact trace anybody within five days, they've realized that the, the new Omicron is spreading. It's out there, it's not just in schools, it's, 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 the contact tracing is not.
It's just not practical. All right, so it's a direct admission that it wasn't practical?
Yeah, it's just, it's just moving forward. It's now it's time to start looking at more of a isolated cases as opposed to everybody being exposed and having it. But we will still keep track of positive cases, like, like it said in the slide. And then every Friday, we will report positive cases to the health department. They're still gonna track the positive cases.
And also keep them updated on the website for people are asking that.
And again, instead of those emails, like both Doctor Kailas and Nick had said, is that we will be updating the website. So if anyone wants to see what is going on on a daily basis, that will be updated.
So the information is still available?
Yeah, it's just not the bombardment.
Contact tracing is a lot more difficult at the upper levels because kids move about. They're not in a cohort together, they're in a classroom together all day. So you have one student mixing it up with another hundred and fifty kids, and of course, of transitioning from classroom to classroom. It's, it's almost impossible. Yeah, and then, and then they want to know whether or not it's three feet or six feet. Or we're, and we didn't have a measure to take about that. Try to keep them apart, but I mean, we've got eighteen hundred kids in the school here, how practical is it?
Right.
Yeah, I guess the biggest thing is we're still to our due diligence if we see a pocket. I mean, that's what we've always done. We've, we had this conversation almost two years ago. I remember us wondering what we should do with Riverview because we were at about eleven percent of the building with the flu. We were real close to what we needed to do at that point, and then kind of started to subside, so. But that's what we've always done, we've always done, you know, kind of monitored the illnesses. And again, we always stress that a child's sick, not feeling well, we keep them at home, but usually a day or two of them, we're usually pretty good. Especially with teenagers.
Thanks for the deep explanation.
Yeah.
I'm happy to know that we have an update for students. I know that this is basically happened, and now that we're moving along with it. But, so on Friday, we had student surveys that were completed for grades six through twelve. It consists of one thousand four hundred and seventy-eight students surveyed. So this outreach is, is, is pretty good, it's pretty, pretty strong. So the week of January tenth through the fourteenth, we had parent community surveys completed. That's eight hundred and forty-four, and we were tasked with going through every single comment and trying to find things and trends among what we heard. And we're trying to pull that together right now because that's gonna help us also drive what we're going to have as some of the major components of the strategic plan. And then the thirteenth and fourteenth, we have focus groups at Lammuth and Riverside. As you can see, five groups, twelve at Riverside, three groups of twelve at Lammuth. And February first, we're gonna have thirty-six people at a three o'clock session with Patty and Lisa, our facilitators, and also forty-two people at five P M. and forty-six at seven P M., which is a nice balance. We wanted to be able to have multiple choices of when they could come in because we know people work and they have different schedules. So we have a good cross-section. People that have called, we've allowed to come in, so if anyone else is interested, just need to let us know. Uh, February third, we'll have that update to the Board event. And February twenty-third is Central Office of Building Leadership meeting to tie everything together. So it is coming together, it's been, it's quite a bit of work. With everything going on, we're trying to find the time to fit everything in. But we are moving ahead because we know this is a very important thing to get done. Uh, just an update from the Ohio High School Athletic Association. You might have already heard this, but I wanted to make sure that it was a, you know, presented at a board meeting. Uh, the O H S A A will begin sanctioning boys volleyball and girls wrestling for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three academic school year. Every once in a while, they, they do sanction sports. The last one I have up here was Boys and Girls Lacrosse in two thousand and sixteen. At this point, we don't have any teams unless there's a great interest for it. And then obviously, we go to the Board and ask whether or not we can add it, and then we find a coach. At this point, in the past, we've had some girls on the wrestling team, not very often, football as well. But now we have their own boys have volleyball, girls are gonna have wrestling, and it's sanctioned by the O H S A A. I sanctioning these sports, now the O H S A A has sanctioned twenty-eight sports. They're also considering adding esports too, which is electronic sports, which I think is kind of odd. When you think of the O H S A A, you go physical sports.
So is it basically computer games?
Yes.
Computer games?
Yeah, it's big, big stuff, I've got it on for scholarships. You can get, you can get college scholarships for esports.
It's scholarships.
Okay, Ohio revised code of school district policy requires schools to publicly report bullying instances semi-annually, you know, at the end of the semester. Just for comparison's sake, I put the last couple of years on there. And we'll also be giving Mrs. Kreniski a redacted bullying report from the first semester of this, of the school year, which is my obligation to do so, so. We don't have any group numbers reported for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty of the second semester, only because we were remote during that time period. But I added the other years just to give you the Board a comparison. District Spelling Bee, want to congratulate Melbridge fifth grader Kendall Brown for winning the District Spelling Bee on January twenty-sixth. She will compete at the Lake County Spelling Bee on Tuesday, February first at Hale Road, which is a change of venue for anyone that's out there that go to these things. In the past, it's been at Auburn Career Center, and it's gonna be at Hale Road. And we want to congratulate our other grade level champions. Fourth grade, Henry Simon. Fifth grade is the champion for our district, Kendall Brown. Sixth grade, Claire Siegel. Seventh grade, Chloe Clark. And eighth grade, eighth grade of James Ozigah. I want to congratulate those kids. Every once in a while, if you get out of the county, you go to the tri-county, and then after that, you go to Washington, D.C. January is School Board Recognition Month, and I believe people become Board members because they care about the children in the, in the, in their community. Sometimes it is one of the greatest ways to serve others, and sometimes it's also thankless due to challenging issues. Past two years, I know it hasn't been easy for schools or even the Board. They haven't been the kindest, but our Board forged ahead, making some tough decisions and, you know, to serve the staff and the kids in our district and also the community at large. And for that, we want to say that we're grateful to our Board, and we want to thank you and congratulate you on Board Appreciation Month. May I go?
Thank you, Doctor Kailas. All right, now for the Treasurers Report and Committee Update. So Finance and Audit and Personnel Committee and Strategic Plan Liaison, Mrs. Rossi?
Strategic Plan, you already called it the Strategic Plan, but I did have a conversation with our facilitators just a couple of weeks ago, two weeks ago, yesterday as a matter of fact. They commented on how the administration of the district is really forging ahead and pulling together to get this plan done. I'm truly looking forward to what is presented to us on the third, when we have our meeting in the morning to find out all the information. They're gonna be pulling together, the administration is pulling together all the information from all of these parent groups and student groups and things that they have found through the surveys and to present some of the findings and to present the categories of interest that will probably move forward with the strategic plan. So we talked about a lot of things. I felt a lot better once I had spoken to them because I was kind of out of the loop on the strategic plan after quite some time not being the liaison for that. So, so we're moving ahead, I'm looking forward to it. And I think they said that the plan should be completed for presentation by our March meeting, if I'm not mistaken. So that will be really, really exciting for us, so I'm looking forward to that. As far as our personnel and committee, or Finance meeting, I promise that next meeting, we will have our personnel information go first because the Finance Committee usually takes up all the time. But I want to go through, that we went through all of the agenda items that are on here, and I had a couple of notes for the agenda. We have an update of our permanent appropriations to account for the welding lab grant funds, as well as an update in federal grant funding, just because sometimes those things get updated during the year. I don't want to take all of the things that you're gonna talk about, so don't mind me. Uh, we talked about our annual credit card reward program, which is required to give notification to the Board relating to our credit cards. So we received a check in August, I think, from P N C for our credit card rebates. Uh, we talked about acceptance of a twenty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollar, eighty-two cent school safety training grant from the Ohio Attorney General's Office. And I see in our OSBA material that that's open for application for the next school year. I'm assuming it will probably be applied for that, so that's good. Um, we had, we had lengthy conversation about a, a contract, that we don't have the contract on renewal for this agenda, but we do have a purchase order for security details. So we had some, we had some conversations surrounding that contract. Some language updates that we might want to be thinking about when we have that up for renewal again. We talked about other purchase orders that are in excess of amounts allowable for automatic approval. So we have our Microsoft subscription fees, a freezer purchase for Buckeye. Uh, we had some P S I affiliates, which is our Alpiana Nursing Services for elementary schools. And we had a purchase for Lakeland Community College for our C C P textbooks, which again, we don't know what that amount is until after, after they're finished with that. So we have to do a purchase order after the fact. We had some conversation about donations. I would like to thank Advance E M I Corporation, who donated seven thousand dollars for our Rave program. They have affiliation with some of those students, but.
I saw that in the, as I pre-read the agenda, what is Rave?
I am going to let.
Okay. Yes. It's the vocational program that we have here at Riverside for our students who have more severe disabilities. So once they complete their credits, and some of our students start, you know, about their tenth grade year, eleventh grade year, even if they have, they might be part-time, and they go out into the community. And we have agreements and collaboration with businesses out in the community. For example, T J Maxx, we've had Bed Bath &amp; Beyond in the past. Uh, we've been in Lakeland Community College, Tri Point Hospital. But they go out and they're getting their vocational goals met in terms of actual work experience with job coaches as well as a supervisor on site.
So it's real-world experience?
It is real-world experience, and I'm, I'm pleased to let you know that some of our students have actually gained. The, the main goal is for them to be competitively employed, and they have actually gained employment from some of these placements and then officially graduated from high school.
Okay, so here's the real test. What does Rave stand for?
Riverside achieving, oh my gosh, Riverside achieving vocational excellence. I haven't had to say that in quite a few times, so I had to think about that.
So then we, we moved on to talk about this new formula for the state school funding, which I'm not gonna review because I'm not like here to review that. Um, I know that's probably in his Treasurers Report, and he can go through all the ins and outs of how that is changing for us. We talked very briefly about the phase two that, that is on the agenda in a separate agenda item. So we'll have that on the agenda. And then we talked about, for personnel, we talked about the number of positions that we have open district-wide, how many that we have filled. Um, we talked about asynchronous course recovery, supplemental contracts that are in here that we will hopefully be continuing those things during the summer and forward into the future due to the number of students who are participating in those classes. So that's what I have for Finance, Personnel.
Any questions? All right, Mr. Papu will provide an update to the Board on the Treasury.
I have a few updates and then go through a few slides and then we'll talk about the, the state funding update. Um, so earlier this month, well, actually sometime last year, I applied for a school bus grant through, through the federal government, through the E P A, for three buses, for twenty thousand dollars per bus. Uh, I received notice that we were tentatively selected for one bus as we were the last district picked from the lottery. But they said it's likely they can get additional funding if someone drops out. Maybe not, I guess, they did have someone drop out. So we are being awarded sixty thousand dollars towards the purchase of three school buses.
Why would somebody, why would somebody drop out?
Maybe it's been on the funding for their, their portion of the, of the bus. So it's twenty thousand, that would cover the whole bus. The typical bus is around eighty-three, eighty-four thousand dollars per bus. The reason I applied for three buses is because we only had three buses left that were old enough to qualify for replacement through their program. Then yesterday as well, we received notice from the State of Ohio because the new buying budget has a school bus purchase grant as part of that as well. And so we were awarded a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of three buses. So now we have funding for additional buses. And that's part of the state buying budget that's also based on the age of the fleet. So you get forty-five thousand dollars per bus. So that was added to tonight's agenda approval of that grant as well. And speaking of bus grants, if you remember, last year, we, we also awarded an Ohio E P A grant for two hundred thousand. Those buses we received in time for the school year. We had finished the deconditioning, we had to scrap the old buses, and I'm working on getting that cash request in to be reimbursed two hundred thousand dollars for that purchase as well. Also, early, late last year, we received the Emergency Connectivity Fund grant, which was four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to purchase one thousand five hundred and seventy-one Chromebooks. That purchase is complete, and we put in our cash request through the E rate process to get that reimbursed for that grant as well. So a lot of grant funds move around right now, so it's, it's added a lot of extra work in my office, but, you know, what I don't need to do to get these funds and this extra funding. Also have a quick update, I have a number of discoveries. Also have a quick update, I remember Discovery Tours, they were the tour company that, that did the, we do our Chicago and DC trips at my bankrupt. Uh, the trial was delayed for Joseph Chippaletti, who, who invested $609,000 in the company. Uh, that trial has been delayed till May 10th as they work on a plea deal. And because of COVID, they shut down cases for a few weeks, or court cases for a few weeks. So they have to wait. So May 10th is now the, the new court date. And I, yeah, I might go back and look like, when was that? Originally was that Chicago trip listed occur, that was actually May 7, 2018. So now the trial will be basically four years from the date that, that. So I have a few slides to go through here. I passed off the slides, actually, I have the necessary to sort them out. Every January, we go through some data as we get our new tax rates. And, um, so this slide here lists all of our current levies in place. Uh, we have the inside mileage, which is your unvoted mileage of 4.8 mils. And then listing of all of our operating levies there in the right-hand column and effective tax rate, which is your residential tax rate, the residential taxpayers pay. We have a total general fund mileage of 26.81 mils. And we have the permanent improvement level in 2016 of 1.98 mils. And the 2016 phase one, that 1.35 mils. So our total effective mileage of all our levies is 30.14 mils. Um, if you recall, this year was a three-year update. So everyone's valuation had increased in an inward of 15%, some a little bit lower, some a little bit higher. Uh, so as the tax rates go up, or as the property tax valuations go up, the tax rates generally come down except for on inside mileage, is that set at 4.8 mils. So I think last year was, the total mileage was around 34 mils or so, and now it's at 30.14. Just as values as well, tax rates go down, your, your tax bill is generally similar to what it was, even though your valuation up, but you did, would have seen an increase on inside mileage. And also the Lake County Metro Parks passed a renewal with an increase. There was a .4 mil increase on that levy as well. So it's hard to really separate it off because there's so many moving pieces in the mileage. It's kind of hard to point that out. And this amount does not include this Lake County School Finance District, which has a reason of 1.94 mils now. So this slide here lists all the school districts in Lake County. Uh, Wickland's current mileage is 52.9 mils. As you can see, Riverside is at 30.14, with the third lowest property tax in Lake County, uh, besides Madison at 28.34 mils, and then Perry at 20 mils. Obviously Perry has the power plant, which is why their tax rate is lower. And this year they are now at 20, which if you've ever heard of a term called the 20 mil floor. Uh, school districts are, your mileage for a school district cannot drop below 20 mils. And so when you, when you count, and that's counting inside mileage and what's called current expense levies, that's your typical property tax levy. Uh, so once you hit 20 mils, as your valuation goes up, your taxes go up on all mileage, not just inside mileage. So it's a little bit of an easy thing, but that's, that's Perry, that's not Riverside. Ironically, it's hard to tell, but Willbe Eastlake and Kirkland are also at the 20 mil floor because the 20 mil floor does not include either bond issued levies or emergency levies. So for example, Willbe Eastlake, your taxes could go up as, you know, not just inside mileage, not any voted current expense levy. So that's probably a little technical, but it's, it's something to point out.
Just to make sure I'm tracking, so if your operational levies are, they can't ever drop below 20%. That includes the inside mileage or 20 mils. So, so all operational levies that are on the books combined plus the inside mileage cannot drop below 20 mils.
Right. That'd be current expense operating levies, not emergency levies. So you don't factor in emergency levies, those are taken out of calculation. It's only, it was considered a current expense levy. So if you went back to the previous slide, as you can tell, most of our general fund mileage is current expenses up to the substantive levy. So if you add it up for us, the inside of current expense levies, we're at, I think, 23 and change. I don't remember exactly what it was, so we're not, we're still about three mils away from the 20 mil floor.
So is, is the 20 mil floor always been in place? I've not heard of it, and I just, you know.
I think it's been in place.
Since the mid-'70s.
Since the 1976 when House Bill 920 wasn't in place, but, you know, it's, it's been around for a long time.
Just that, no, 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 no.
It's, it's more common in more southern Ohio and in those type of school districts. Not necessarily in the mystery areas, that's why I don't fully hear much. Too much about it, but I just thought it was a little interesting. Yeah, because I had heard the term of 20 mil floors for years, and then it's quite understood. So I'm, I'm.
So in the next slide, when you talked about, I think, Willbe Eastlake and another.
Kirkland.
And Kirkland. So they, they have emergency levies, and that includes emergency levies and, and bond levies. And you're saying that if you took those out, they would be at the 20 mil floor?
They're at the 20 mil floor.
They are at the 20 mil floor.
We had inside mileage and what's called current expense levy, which is traditional type of property.
Thank you.
The Ohio Department of Education puts out a, it's called District Profile Report. Also used to be referred as the CUP report, regarding the name CUP. He's the current speaker of the House and not one to kind of advocate for this type of data release. Um, this slide here kind of shows state revenue per pupil. So this is type of the state funding that, that comes through from the state of Ohio. In Lake County, Riverside receives the second lowest amount of state revenue per pupil at around just over $3,000 per, per student. Uh, the state average is 6,579, and you can see like Kirkland's school below us, and you can kind of see where the other districts in Lake County fall as well. And it always kind of breaks us up as, and interesting that Perry is near the top and that's because the, if you remember, tangible personal property tax was phased out many years ago, I think in probably 2004 timeline, and there was a, there was a reimbursement that came to the school districts to offset that loss of revenue. And there's been a phase out over time, so Perry is still receiving some of that, some of those reimbursements. That's why their state revenue per pupil is, is so high, is higher than you'd expect. Looking at expenditure per pupil, which is another data point that they put out there. Riverside is the second lowest expenditure per pupil in Lake County. $11,000 is a little over $1,000. The state average is around $13,000 per pupil. So that's kind of just to show where we fall within Lake County with, you know, Perry, with those are near the top. Uh, next slide here is state funding. Uh, I, I did pass out the sheets of the board here, and this comes from these reports you pulled from Ohio Department of Education website. Uh, and so with the current buying budget that went in effect since past July 1st, 2021, implemented a new funding formula that's been named the Fair School Funding Plan. OBE has worked, Ohio Department of Education is working on implementing this new formula, uh, which is they discovered is probably more complex than originally thought, and their implementation was delayed. Typically, when there's a change in, in budget, they, the state budget, usually by October, they use the new figures of what our funding looks like. But in this case, did not get released until January number one payment. So our state funding comes in two payments per month. So January number one was the first time we saw it, and then January number two, which is what's up on the screen, it is, is, was a little updated because once they released the first, uh, hand report, all the treasurers of the state started looking at it, and they, we started finding errors and they had to make some corrections. So if you were to take January number one and compare to January number two, there was, there were several changes in, in figures, and there's still some things that OBE is still working on programming, so there could be some changes a little more as going in. Shouldn't be anything too material, more about small tweaks. And they are also in the process of designing the other 22 supporting reports that go into these figures. So those 22 other reports that roll up into this report to, to help understand what goes into these numbers. If you get anything out of what I'm kind of, because this is a little complicated to explain, but if you get anything out of what I'm, what I'm trying to say is there's a guarantee built into the new formula. So you will not lose, you will not receive less funding this year than you did in 2019. So 2019 was last year, we had a true funding formula. In 20 and 21, it was frozen. Then with COVID and there were state deductions, you had reduced some of our funding. You now go back to the guarantee of this year is no less than 2018. And the reason that is important, if you look at this, uh, report up here, column A is base state funding. So now, school funding is now based on the kids that we are educating in the district. In the past, it was based on the kids that lived in the district. So if, if, if a child lives in, in the past, their child lived in Riverside, and they've open-rolled to another district, they went to a charter school, they have STEM school, you know, something of that nature, they would give us funding at our percentage, which was typically around $1,250 a student, somewhere around that range. And then when they would go somewhere else, they would take $6,020 from us and send it somewhere else. So essentially, every time we lost a student to a neighboring district, it was like we lost the funding for five students. So that's all changed. Now all districts are now directly funded from the state based on who you're educating. Charter schools are directly funded as well. And open enrollment, instead of being a deduction from one district in addition to another, is all directly funded. So column A is our base state funding, which is based on 2019, but then adjusted to account for the different model of funding kids who we educate as opposed to live here. Column B is the new calculation. If the Fair School Funding Plan is fully implemented and there was no guarantee or anything like that, our basic, our state funding would go from 5.8 million to 1.7, which is about a 70% reduction in funding, which is dramatic. I think it was drastically different than what the simulations and the legislative service commission put out back in last year. So the new formula is being, being phased in at 16.67% this year, which is 1/6, basically like a six-year phase-in, but they can't commit beyond two years of business state buying budget. So that's what you see in column, the, the third column, column C, is basically 16%, 16.67% of that being phased in, which for us is a negative $676,000 to make our state funding 5.1. Now, going to the next slide is, now that hand report is kind of the bottom part, this is where the guarantee kicks in, that puts it back up to where we started, essentially. I know it's, it seems confusing. So there is a supplemental target assistance, which we don't call it by far, it's more for districts of lower appropriate property tax wealth. Then there's line J is what's called the Temporary Transitional Aid Guarantee, which is in permanent law, people always call it the temporary guarantee. And that's, that's what's kind of guaranteeing you're not receiving less funding this year than you had in 2019. But because there was a, we had a drop in open enrollment because we are not taking any open enrollment this year due to class sizes in elementary, but then we had 12th grade graduates, so we factored that in, and a few people that have left for various reasons. We had more than 10% drop in open enrollment students coming in. So our, our guarantee was reduced by about $126,000. Then there's line K, which is transportation funding. That increased for us, which is, is good. Then line L is called the Formula Transition Supplement, which pretty much gave us back that money that we had lost from the open enrollment drop because there's a temporary guarantee in the current buying budget that won't, that you won't lose funding as well. So there's two different guarantees, one that's called temporary, that's permanent, and one that's temporary, that's not called temporary. So if you're completely confused at this point, I think you've achieved the goal. And so, you know, I've said to you many hours of presentations on this and speaking to Aaron Roush, who, Aaron Roush is the Ohio Department of Education. He's the guy that pretty much is the mastermind behind implementing these laws and these formulas. And he actually uses our district as one of the examples in his presentations across the state when he says of the drop in funding if we were, if it was fully implemented, there was no guarantee. Um, so basically, at the same time, we just need to be cautious in future buying budgets, kind of watching whether they do a guarantee, because the whole point of the new formula was to get districts off of what was called a cap or a guarantee. We were on a guarantee before, we're on a guarantee now. But we've also reached what's called the 5% floor. So with the Fair School Funding Plan, there's a calculation that looks into your property tax wealth as a district and income values. And that's how they kind of decide what percentage of funding would come from the state. So if you remember, under the old formula, it was called the State Share Index. We were at 21%, I think it was like 21, just over 21%. We are now at 5%, which is the lowest you can go. And so we're kind of the same, the same boat as, you know, the wealthier districts that you hear about, like Orange and Beechwood, Indian Hills, Upper Arlington, down to Columbus, kind of what's considered wealthy districts. We're now in the same category as with the 5% floor. So it's, it's kind of interesting because I think that was a lot different than, than we anticipated. The good news is because of the guarantee, we pretty much have all these different calculations and end up in the same place, if that makes sense. So it's, it just seems very odd to me to be where we're at. And, um, as ODE develops those additional supporting, uh, reports, if you go onto this, we'll analyze those and see, is there some hidden error? Or is it just simply how the, how the chips evolve, if that makes sense? And we're thinking, and talking to Aaron Roush a lot, we're thinking it has to do with this formula factors in income figures, where the previous one, it definitely hurt you for income levels and helped you with the previous formula, where in this formula, it can hurt you. And we think that that factor in the income levels of presence in the district may have helped push us to the 5% floor.
So if I could, just kind of making sure I'm understanding the basics. I'm, I'm not saying that tomorrow even I'll understand what you explained to me, but.
Yeah, I don't think I really understand all the, all the pieces of it. It's quite complex.
So, so column A, if we go back to the top of this. So column A is the baseline funding if everything was, if all the school districts were equal, basically.
It's, that is basically.
Where's that, 2019?
That's 2019.
Okay.
Adjusted for the difference in how we fund students based on where they're educated as to, as close to where they live.
Okay. So 2019, we would have been given, um, 5.8 million.
Essentially, in 2019, if we direct, if we were direct funded in 2019, that's, that's what our funding would have been.
We've got any adjustments right now? Okay, so, so column B is what we would have with taking into all the characteristics of our district. It would be 1.7 mil.
Right. If the, if the formula was fully phased in as written, that's where we would be.
Okay. So the 5.8 million, did we get 5.8 million? Or is that just based hypothetically on, on a new baseline?
That, we will be getting that 5.8 million, well, we will be getting that 5.8 million when it's all said and done.
Right, right, okay, so, okay, so, so then, then they, they adjusted it again in column C with a almost, you know, $700,000 negative adjustment.
Right. So that's going to be your phase in 1/6. So it's a, right now, it's the phase in a six-year phase in, so it's a phase in at 16.67.
It's a 1/6 of your $4 million.
Right. And so, so column D does not take into account column B, that's just there to, to show us what it would be.
Right.
Okay, so, so it's 5.1 million. And then, then going down to the second part of, of the sheet we're looking at, these are additional add-backs, more or less, for the guarantee.
Yes.
And keeps us full.
Columns J and L are the, the guarantees that pretty much keep us full.
Okay. But what you're, if I'm hearing you, what you're saying is the whole reason to change the formula was to get rid of guarantees, and they're not at this point. But that could still be a goal of future legislatures. So, so, I mean, should we be, how nervous should we be that we might lose, if I'm reading this right, $4.1 million in state aid?
Right. And that, that's the.
Because that'd be almost 10% of our budget.
Yeah.
So I just want to add that I know that there was a workshop, an input workshop. What, what date was that, March?
I think it was March 1st.
March 1st. And, and I had asked Gary if he was going to attend that, it was a webinar. That one's a webinar-based, you can go to these ones that are in person. He signed up for it, I signed up for it. Uh, it's an opportunity to actually have direct conversation. Instead of just attending a webinar, you'll actually be able to speak and provide, you know, some, some feedback on, on this. It, it's my. It's my understanding that, let me make sure I'm understanding, we will be down to $1.7 million in six years without the guarantees, but one of them is a guarantee in law, and one of them is not. So, half of that money, we may not be guaranteed to get back. It's detrimental to this district, and I don't think that was intended, and then they put these guarantee dollars back into the budget, so that, because they worry about, oh my gosh, we passed this law, and now look what it's doing to these districts. They recognize it, but then they don't know what to do with it, and so then we'll come back up and do another biennial budget, and they'll try and figure it out, and we'll have some new thing. It's constantly changing, and I have to commend Gary for, like, taking this up and tackling this, because he does a lot of homework on this, and he does, he does have conversations with ODE and attends these webinars. I mean, there's a lot of data, and it's always changing. So, at least thank you for staying on top of it, it's mindful of what goes into this.
So essentially, the line J, which is the temporary aid guarantees, currently in permanent law, but as you know, any law can be changed in the future. On that first screen, as they continue to phase in over the years, as the funding goes down on that previous screen, line J will increase to offset that. But the guarantee in line L is the one that's only temporary in the current biennial budget. So that's the line we really have to pay attention to. I don't think guarantees will go away anytime in the near future, and I think it's too early to even know, because, I mean, we're in the first month of seeing these numbers for the first time, so everyone's kind of struggling to understand all the different pieces that go into it, how does it affect us, what were the unintended consequences? There's one additional piece that actually will help us, well, two pieces I was going to bring up, too, is, on page, on the first page of line C, special education funding is $200,000. They're going to take away 10% of that from us and put it towards catastrophic cost reimbursement. Catastrophic cost reimbursement is, when we have special ed students, who the cost to educate exceeds a certain dollar threshold, we file through the Ohio Department of Education for reimbursement for catastrophic costs. So, part of this new formula is to take 10% of the special ed funding, so for us, about $200,000, and put it into catastrophic cost reimbursement pool, that gets distributed among districts. So there's a filing we do, and then in June of each year, we get a payment for them. We typically receive around $300,000 of catastrophic cost reimbursement. By the, ODE taking 10% of their special ed funding and putting this pool, they essentially are going to double that reimbursement. So, as we might lose $20,000 on the top, we might get $600,000 in catastrophic cost reimbursement, which is separate from this whole formula. So it's, we might win that way as far as a funding increase for that. And the other thing that ODE mentioned, too, is now that we're on a guarantee, so these different funding lines on this first page, I go through in detail the disadvantages, people aid, English learners, gifted, career tech. Those numbers are being reduced. So, when the money goes into the guarantee, it becomes unrestricted. So we don't have to spend it the way that they're funding it, per se, it's more open to our district. So we're not, you know, we don't spend a certain amount, you know, let's say I'm gifted, it's $200,000. If we're not spending $200,000 and gifted, as that number's reduced, we don't have to spend all those kind of funds, if we do just spend elsewhere, so that, and that's just kind of example. So it just kind of, does remove some of the restrictions, but then you're at the risk of future changes in the guarantee to this funding. So it's just, it seems like it's a giant shell game, that all these funding numbers are moving around, we end up pretty much in the same place that we started.
Yeah, it's just, it's the same, and people are paying, no doubt, they're working hard, right? But the benefit to us in the state is the minimalist, because all we're doing is shifting money around, and we're coming up, at this point, pretty much where we were, but a whole lot of effort to get us there.
Yeah.
And very difficult to plan.
Right, and very hard to describe.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, how do you plan? Because if you're going to plan, you have to plan for a reduction in funds.
I mean, because that's...
Because that's what they're proposing right now.
Right.
It's, you know, the fair school funding plan was supposed to, you know, take the burden off the property taxes, local taxpayer. Well, based on our situation, you know, you can't get there, because it's, you know, there's no increase in funding, per se, you know, maybe a little bit, playing out, it fall over the next couple of years.
Well, we're at the floor, right?
Right.
Gary, there's a new biennial budget, June 30th, this year, right? Is it this year?
It's, it'll be next year, so, we're basically, we're basically 25% to the biennial before we solve the calculation.
I forget if it was last year or if it's this year.
All right, well, this is disturbing. I often ask people, what keeps you open tonight? I don't have to ask you.
We haven't heard that in a while.
Well, I'm going to ask you to explain it next month, see...
We may have to talk up one.
Any other questions on that?
So I guess, and if this is something you can't answer easily, then it's not worth it. But you have a neighboring district, his men are, they have a different, you know, a higher percentage of commercial property as part of their tax base than we do. Were they affected? Do you have any sense if they were impacted by similar constraints? Or are they in a better situation because of that diversified tax base?
As far as for the funding formula, I know I looked at it, and I'm going to just off memory, it's hard, ODE changed the way they did the reporting, so it's a little trickier to pull the reports up, it's not as quick and simple as it used to be. They did see a drop-off, but not to the magnitude that we're seeing. But then the guarantee also kicks in for them as well. I think SHARD was another example that they were down to about 8%, so they're a little above the 5% floor. So they're seeing a reduction as well, on the initial calculation before the guarantee kicks in. So it's, you know, we're kind of monitoring and kind of see how things go, you know. And as you know, we're members of the Alliance for High Quality Education, which typically represents districts of higher property tax wealth. And so we've already been in discussions about the formula, and just kind of, you know, what kind of changes might be made in the future? Because they actually advocated for the 5%, because I don't think there was a 5% floor before, so we'd actually be slightly lower. I think it was like 4.7 or 4.8% from then, fell, if you did the calculation, to the 5%. So we'd put in slightly less. But with the guarantee, we're still, we're still, there's still some positives in there, so I, you know, it's just, now we have to be careful and watch the guarantee. And we've been on a guarantee for many years, so it's, you know, it's something that's been around, so I don't think there are going to be drastic changes. And typically, as they change funding formulas or make tweaks, they typically always have, some of it that you don't lose. But at some point, it's bound to happen, there was, I think it was, I think it was two biennial budgets ago, where they were proposing making the guarantee 95% instead of, you know, full guarantees. There has been talk of reducing guarantees in previous...
In essence, what we do, so what happened over time is that they changed the formula, but there'd always be a guarantee, so that they would change things, but it wouldn't really be a net result change, and they weren't happy with that. So then they put in the new financing last year, and they're going right back to guarantee, they're going back to the same situation where there is no formula, because so many districts want to fall under the guarantee.
And they just, they just not been able to see like how many districts are on a guarantee yet, that should have come out. So any other questions that indicate on the webinars, how many districts are on a guarantee and not really on a formula? That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Ross, you mentioned there might be a place, so. Multiple choose.
That still would be enough.
Right, so, we'll move on to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes. Any public participation? Go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, my name's Chris Wallace, I live out in Leroy, and I have three sons in the district. I wanted to talk about the proposed new school campus, and the putting out a vote out this spring for another levy to build, but it would essentially be a brand-new Riverside and John R. Williams campus. I wanted to ask the Board to table that decision indefinitely, and go back and reassess what the actual cost would be to go forward with that initiative. What I heard, the high-level information that I heard in the January 5th meeting, as well as from talking to numerous board members, and also Mr. Placko, is that while the 2013 study, which is about 783 pages, says that we should have built a new school, a new high school campus for like $117 million, is now the advantage of about in the $147 million range. And that, at a meeting that was had with one of the chief architects, asking him if it could really be done for that, several board members were told that that figure was low by as much as 30%, and that that could ultimately push the cost to in the $200 million range to build a high school. I also heard that you guys are planning to try to sell 40-year maturity bonds to fund this. In my experience, 20-year bonds are about the maximum. Also trying to get a bond rating, where those bonds would be considered investment grade, where people would buy them, while at the same time, that servicing the bonds and retiring the bonds with multi-decade school levies that statutorily expired before the bonds could be retired. That's just the highlight of stuff. Myself, I'm a construction professional, I spent the last 34 years doing construction management, everything from literally dock houses to coal-fired power plants, okay? So my experience on point with projects such as yours is having done major industrial renovation projects, new power plant construction builds, mining operation, infrastructure, where I've handled multiple hundred-million-dollar, up to multi-billion-dollar projects. I think that the present environment, politically, economically, and otherwise, is going to preclude any contractor, general contractor, from giving you a lump sum bid, even with the builder's at-risk clause in it, that you could rely on, that you put any faith into. We're looking at supply chain issues all over the world, on structural steel and other key building components, that the United States has no control over. We're looking at increases in the interest rates through the Federal Reserve, they're talking about two of them this year possibly. And I just think that nobody here knows what they don't know about how to get a 150-plus-million-dollar school bill, and to do it in a manner where you have a reasonable chance of success, cost and schedule, to complete the work without seriously putting the future finances of the district in jeopardy. I would like to engage with the Building Committee, I would offer my time and expertise at no charge to help you guys sort out some of that. And again, I humbly request that you table the decision to put this to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Raul. So in light of what Chris just said, I'd like to know if there's some way that we can have put up onto the Riverside website how best to get the school board members to address a question or questions from the residents, and address it in a, in a good, you know, let's say a good light. I mean, where the person is addressed as, excuse me, where the person gets addressed as being treated like a normal person, and not called names, hollered at, because I have experienced watching this with a particular school board member here. And I didn't think that that was actually the way to do it, so I'm wondering, do you have a policy for that? Is there a school policy on how the school board addresses the residents and the questions that they may have, or concerns that they may have about certain school policies that are in place that are not being enforced?
Thank you. Any other public participation? That brings us to our consented agenda, starting with finance and audit. Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the finance and audit consent agenda is recommended by the treasurer, items A through L. One more second.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on these? We've talked about all of these in our finance committee report. If not, can we call the roll, please?
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Belinda Gracie?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Laurie Kiskin?
Aye.
Tom Hahn?
Aye.
Question carried, thank you. Next, we have item N, which is a resolution to proceed with the bond issue. We have a resolution determining to proceed with the bond issue and submitting the question to the electors in the school district on May 3, 2022, second ballot. Would you like me to read that, Mr. Kales?
Please be wise.
I printed it out, I assume this has not changed since I printed this off. Whereas this Board of Education, a resolution duly adopted on January 5, 2022, 2022, determined the necessity of issuing bonds in the amount of $147,725,000 in order to participate in the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission Expedited Local Partnership Program by raising the school district's portion of the basic project cost and additional funds required to participate in the program, including locally funded initiatives for the purpose of new construction improvements, renovations, and additions to school facilities, including providing equipment, furnishings, utilities, and site improvements therefore, and the necessity of levying an annual direct tax on all the taxable property in this school district outside of the 10 no limitation, to pay the interest on and to retire said bonds, and provided that the question of issuing said bonds and of levying said district tax shall be submitted to the electors of the said school district at the election to be held on May 3, 2022. Whereas the treasurer of this Board of Education has certified that the maximum maturity of said bonds is 37 years, and whereas the county auditor has certified that the estimated average annual levy throughout the life of said bonds, which will be required to pay the interest on and retire said bonds, is 5 and 37 hundreds, 5.37 mils, for each $1 valuation, which amounts to 23 and 7 tenths cents for each $100 valuation. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Riverside Local School District, here and after called the Board of Education, Counties of Lake and Geoga, Ohio, Section 1, that it is hereby determined to proceed with the issuance of bonds of this Board of Education in the amount of $147,725 for the purpose stated above, and to levy annual direct tax on all the taxable property in said school district outside of the limitation imposed by Section 2 of Article 12 of the Constitution of the State of Ohio, and that the question of issuing said bonds and of levying said direct tax shall be submitted to the electors of the entire territory of the said school district at the election to be held on May 3, 2022, under authority of Section 133.18 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 2, that the treasurer of this Board of Education be and is hereby directed to certify to the Board of Elections a true and correct copy of the resolution of this Board of Education. I think I missed section 3, is there a section 3?
There is.
Let's skip from section 2 to section 4, I'll send us another page.
A minute, finish reading section 2.
Please.
I'll start with the beginning of section 2, that makes it full.
Belinda, if I may, how much was the, how much was the increase for one valuation, I'm sorry?
Let him finish reading, please, first.
So, section 2 is that the treasurer of the Board of Education be and hereby directed to certify to the Board of Elections to certify to the Board of Elections a true and correct copy of the resolution of this Board of Education determining the necessity of said bonds, said direct tax, and said election, and a true and correct copy of this resolution, together with the amount of average tax levy expressed in dollars and cents for each $100 valuation, as well as the mils for each $1 valuation estimated by the county auditor and the maximum number of years required to retire said bonds in the notified Board of Elections to cause notice of such election to be given as required by law. That was a very wordy way of saying, give the Board of Elections a copy of this resolution, the previous two at the last meeting and the county auditor certification.
Did you want me to continue reading this? I hear the section 3.
And then, section 3 is the suggested ballot language that would appear on the ballot. And so, on the ballot, they would say, shall bonds be issued by the Board of Education of Riverside Local School District for the purpose of new construction, improvements, renovations, and additions to school facilities, including providing equipment, furnishings, utilities, and site improvements thereof, with an applicable amount of $147 million to be repaid annually over a maximum period of 37 years, and an annual levy of property taxes to be made outside the 10 mil limitation estimated by the county auditor to average over repayment period of the bond issued, 5 and 37 hundreds, which is 5.37 mils, for each $1 tax valuation, which amounts to 53 and 7 tenths cents for each $100 of tax valuation commencing in 2022, first due in calendar year 2023, to pay the annual debt charge of the bond and pay debt charges on any notes issued in anticipation of those bonds. That's what would appear essentially on the ballot. Unless the Board of Elections has to tweak anything, that's essentially what I think. Then, continue with section 4.
Does that also retire the principal balance of bonds?
It retires the principal interest.
So do we have a second on this resolution? A second. Thank you. Is there any additional discussion on this?
Sure. If I, if I could, so, you know, I, I believe that, as I've said earlier, that Riverside, the current building, has a lot of life left in it. It needs some improvement, there's no doubt, but it has many, many decades of life left in it, but improvements need to be made to make it more habitable for the students and for the staff. There's no two ways about it. But, and we've, and the other thing is, we've obviously been discussing this for a long time as a board. And so, we all want to get off this rock, one way or the other. We want the, the voters to have the choice and then to move forward. My, my concern is that in a scenario where we approve this collectively, and it goes forward, and should the voters approve it, we, we really, like, there's a, there's a lot of risk. We, I mean, we talked a little bit about risk. We don't know, we can't have a trizzle ball with, with our operational budget from the, from the state, but there, there are a lot of, lot of unknowns. And, and if they should approve it, it, it could be, I, it's always a judgment call, but it could be very hard for us as a board to deliver the building in, you know, within the, the financial constraints that we set here. I just, it's really, it's, it's really iffy. So just, I ask that everybody consider that, because that, I, I mean, we all want to get off the rock. We want to, want to go one way or the other, and I, I definitely feel that. It's, it's been a long conversation, and we need to move on, but, but if it, in a scenario where it's approved by the voters, it, it could be very challenging for the board to deliver, deliver what we said we would.
I, I would like to, I would like to add to that statement, because in some respects I agree, but I also want the public to understand that when voters pass this levy, we have the ability to put the collection of that levy or the funds for that, and we collect the money. We don't have to go to construction right away. And if I understand from our municipal bond advisors, we have, we have a fairly lengthy amount of time from which we can deviate from the plan and not go forward with construction, even though it has already passed, if we find that, you know, there are opportunities that we can take advantage of further down the road for costing decreases or whatever, if we feel it's not the right time. We do have the ability to hold on that, even though we have passed the levy. So if we put this forward and we find that it is not the right time, due to inflation or due to, you know, i- issues with supply chain or issues with higher interest rates, we do have the opportunity to wait. And I, I don't, I don't even remember what he said, but it was, it was quite a lengthy amount of time that we can actually sit on that, so.
I know you don't recall. I mean, talking, you know, several years, five years?
Years, like, a number, like, I, I, it was more than five years. Like, you could actually sit there and hold on to that for at least for more than-
That option, in essence.
And I think the example that he gave us was a school that passed it, again, because they didn't have a crystal ball to see what was going to happen over the past few years. They had passed their bond before this happened, and now they're in a position, if I recall the discussion correctly, they're in a position where they didn't realize the inflation that would happen or what's going on in our, you know, world right now. So, and I thought a lot about what you said about, we don't know, right? And it could end up being good at the same time as it could end up being bad. And unfortunately, we don't have that crystal ball to figure out what is the next thing. And I took some time talking to some builders that I know, asking some questions after our last discussion, just to get, and again, we're in a place where there's a lot of different opinions. Everybody's very unsure, so it depends on if you're being conservative or not. And it, it's hard to kind of get a straight, everybody kind of agreed that things are going to look better, things aren't. So, but I do agree with you. I think we're at a point where we are trying to figure out, what do we do next? Like, how do we move on? Because we keep postponing-
We've been at the fork of the road for a really long time.
Right.
And, and as a result of that, I feel like it's time to give the voter the chance to do that for themselves and figure out what it is that they'd like to do as well, and give them the opportunity to do what we've asked them, or that we've told them that we were going to give them the opportunity to do, and take it from there.
Shouldn't you give the voters the opportunity to vote on whether they want a brand-new school or they're willing to renovate the school at a much less cost?
I think we've been down those road, that road already with the Ohio School Facilities Commission, and their recommendation is that the, the school building will be in access of, and don't quote me, because I don't know the exact percentage, so I want to say it's between 70%, something, there's a certain percentage where they say if it costs more to renovate than that percentage, that we, we can choose to do so, but then we do so at our own locally funded, and we miss the opportunity then to have as much money go towards future rebates, which is what we're trying to do in order to get Phase 3 funded.
Well, your 800-page plan shows that those costs would be less than half of what you want to put levies out for.
No, that, that was, what year was that? 2008?
2013. So, your plan is eight years out of date.
We've had, we had to have those costs up-
Plan encompasses what is going on in the world now and what the real cost and risks that Mr. Hat brought up. It's really about managing risk. It's less about managing the bricks and mortar going up. It's about managing all the risks involved of getting from where you are, where you are now, to the goal, which is either a brand-new school for the kids to go to, or this building and John are renovated to a standard that you can move forward into the future.
I, I do want, just want to say thank you for adding more, but again, there is a discussion between the boards, so I just want to make sure that we have the opportunity to address the questions and the thoughts here.
Gary, what, to the question before too, is, what, do we know what the increase per month would be then, or is it, I mean, per year for a homeowner, per 100,000?
Yeah, so, so this is a 37-year levy. The initial mil adjustment is 5.37 mils, which equates to $187.95 per $100,000 valuation, which is 15.66 a month per $100,000 valuation. One of the things to point out that, like, you know, when we did Phase 1, so, so a bond issue, when you issue a bond issue, there's an estimated mileage, and the county auditor has to estimate based on no valuation increases. So, it's usually very conservative, per se, so in essence, the mileage is a little higher. So, like, when we look back at Phase 1, we passed that number in 2016, the 1.92 mil levy. They collected at 1.92 mils the first year, but then, once the bonds are issued, that debt schedule goes to the county auditor's office after, after they're issued, and then the next year, they adjust the tax rate to, so you're only collecting enough to pay the principal interest on those bonds for each year. So after the first year, the mileage dropped from 1.92 to 1.67, and then over the years, we've had the revaluation each year, and as, as we have new growth in our community, that tax rate continues to drop. So multiple factors lower that, so it's likely that after the, and because we're going in May, that might adjust that from the first collection, because the first collection wouldn't be until 2023, so I'm not sure if they adjusted the tax rate the first year or then, if we go in May. I'm not, I'm not sure, but it's, but they might just collect 5.37 the first year and then adjust accordingly from there. So, obviously, I can't promise it will down, but typically, that's what you see, because it's usually a very conservative estimate, because you don't want to put a, a number out that's too low.
So, Gary, let me, let me back up as well. We, when we went forward with this, our, our municipal bond advisors calculated and used an interest rate to determine the dollar amount that we would need. That information had to go to the county auditor, excuse me. And if I'm not correct, we used closer to 4% as an interest rate, assuming that there might be an interest rate increase, so we've already taken that into account. We have an excellent bond rating. I'm sure that we're probably going to be back to go ask for an increase in our bond rating, and so that will be helpful. And all those kinds of things actually go into, you know, what you're ending mileage ends up needing, because we don't know what the interest rate is going to be when we actually go out to sell those bonds, but apparently, we would be ready to go fairly quickly, because all that paperwork is already done, because we had to do that, anticipating refinancing some of the bonds for initial construction projects. So most of that is already taken care of, so that would be a quick turnaround. So all those kinds of things are helpful in this situation. I'm just putting that out there.
Yeah, if I could add to that, I've spoken before about my, my thoughts about bringing this to a vote and to the public for a vote. And the supply chain issue certainly is one issue, an update from me in my business, in my roofing business, is that in talking with distributors right now, they have no idea when they're getting materials. None. And this supply chain issue goes worldwide, and it's a problem. It's, it's so much of a problem that it's gotten down to smaller companies. Fortunately, I was able to put out some capital to acquire materials so that we can function more normally, and there's plenty of other companies that really aren't working much if they're doing commercial, industrial right now, just because of the inability to get the materials to do so. And so, when, when we're moving forward, it's kind of our job to put something out to the public that gives them some assurance it can be executed. And with this knowledge of having no idea if it can be executed, and I understand being able to delay, but then you add to that the inflation that's going on, and no one has any idea. I mean, the idea for almost the last 10 months or so, transitory, you know, this is all transitory, it's going to get back to normal. And then finally, they said, yeah, well, yeah, it's not really transitory, and so, yeah, we're not going to get back to normal. And we have no idea where this is going, then I think it would be irresponsible for the board to give it to the public when they know less than anyone else about what's going on. They're just going to be voting up or down on it. And I know this might, might not be something that a lot of people think a lot about, but I'm getting, I'm getting calls, literally, from people that are retired that are starting to say, I don't know how long, how much longer I could stay in my house if taxes keep going up. One person told me, I paid off my house, but with, with the taxes that I have to pay, it's almost like a, a mortgage payment. And so, and, and, and so, really, the complaint to me from, about that was, and, and the board's going to be asking for more money, and, and if that passes, then I'm going to have to pay more in taxes. And I understand that, that retired people aren't necessarily the, the larger portion of the community, but they're a very important part of the community, and a lot of them are feeling constrained. And so, I, I just really come back to the responsible, are we being responsible in putting this out, knowing what we know? And with Treasurer Platko saying, at some point, it's going to happen, meaning our state funding's going to get reduced, most likely. No one knows for sure, but the way it's going, most likely, that's going to happen. We're going to have reduced funds to even operate, and then we're going to be going back to the public for more money and allowing just to operate. So, that's my input, and I know everyone's going to obviously vote the way they want to. I just think, for me, it's irresponsible to give it to the people under the current circumstances. Plus, as Mr. Weiss said, we're eight years out. Why wasn't, why wasn't there a reassessment so we could be up to date coming forward? I think we were negligent as a board in doing that. That's, that's all I have to say.
Yeah, so I guess, the only thing I would add to that is, again, there's a difference of opinion on, from a industry perspective on whether these supply chain issues will, so I understand your perspective, but there are other people out there that will give us a different perspective on that again. So, there are two different opinions, and I don't know that Gary was, or Mr. Platko was actually saying he can almost guarantee that reduction. It is a possibility. I think we have to consider it. And the other thing is, I think that our public can make a good decision on this. I don't think we should discount that they can take this and evaluate it, and make a decision for themselves. So, I don't know. I think there's a lot of people out there that are very smart, and they can make a decision when they look at it and figure out, is this the right-
Back to the reassessment part, too. Just so you know, we had the audit done in 2008, 2013, and the plan was developed a year or two later. And that's what the plan we sold to the community, and we just completed the first phase. So it wasn't as if all that time is past. We developed a, a plan shortly after that last audit in 2013.
I also just, I have received a few phone calls from people, a couple of them, three of them actually, just talking about the timing of it. And I thought a lot about that. I also have received phone calls from people that are appreciative of the fact that we are finally moving forward and letting them have a, a vote on this. So, again, I'm hearing both sides, if you know what I mean.
So what's your bubble, three on the one side, four on the other?
It's, it's a very confusing time. So I mean, it's something that I've been considering. Yeah.
One thing, too, is, you know, when we, when schools do these bond issues, the, the pond, if it's successful, that's when you really get into the design phase of it, you get into the nuts and bolts and the specs and things like that. So you're not going to go out and bid probably until 12, 18 months after the election. So you're talking a year and a half, two years before you're going out to bid on a project of this size. I think if, if things progressed as it would, normally would, TBA had mentioned that we'd be opening in August of 2026 would be our target open bid, if, if it's successful in May or 2022.
Yeah, what I appreciate that. What I would add to that is, in that timeframe, if you have 7, 8% inflation each year, and all of a sudden, you're looking at compounded maybe 16, 18, maybe even 20% more in cost on 150 million. Now we're 180, 175 to 180 million. So, I just put that on the table.
So I have a more technical question. I, I've heard rumor that the primary date may move, maybe moved into May, you know, later in May, or you can exist here.
I've seen articles, and I'm like, how would that, how would that actually work?
Right. But without going into details why, that's a possibility. Do, do we need to change the, the language to not specifically say May 3, and to talk about the, the May primary? Or are we good with the, the May 3 terminology?
I think, I think technically, you have to use what's current.
Yeah, I would, I would, it would be really interesting if that was the case, because the filing deadline to, for candidates and for, for issues is every second at the week.
Right, that's Tuesday.
So, yeah, so it'd be really interesting to see if they were delaying election, how that would work. You know, back in 2020, we had the election delay from the presidential primary, but the election date always stayed March 17, but then the absentee ballots went till April 20 something, whatever it was, I don't remember exactly what it was, and so you didn't even know until May, so it was March 17 election that ended in April.
Right, and they, they did do that, that's with the coronavirus and the lockdown.
So I would, I would, I would, I would guess they would handle it similarly to that, but I don't really, you know.
That's a great point. And I, to correct myself, I said the filing deadline is next Tuesday, or February 2nd. It's actually Wednesday, February 2nd, just to clarify.
And, and I think it's because of the redistrict, redistricting lines, right? They, candidates are only going to have a couple days, literally, when that's decided, to decide whether to file or not. And they're not even going to know their district sometimes until that point, so there's probably going to be a little extension.
It makes you wonder, you know, as people get their signatures for the, from their district and district changes, are you, does that even be considered? and district changes, are you, does that maybe consider that it was in the correct district, but that's, luckily, I'm aware of that, that issue, it's more of a-
Right, so, I mean, yes, I was going to, how they're going to handle it.
Is there any further discussion on this issue? If there is none, can we call the roll, Mr. Platko?
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
John Hart?
Aye.
Lori Krasny?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Name.
Stat official?
Name.
Motion carried. Um, next is the consent agenda for personnel. Sure, we have the motion to approve items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through F. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on these items? If not, can you call the roll?
Jennifer Hart?
Aye.
Lori Krasny?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Stat official?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Um, motion carried. Um, consent agenda for curriculum and programming. Mr. Official?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry, I was reading something.
That's okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't say that.
Um, we're moving on to the consent agenda for, um, for curriculum and programming.
Okay.
So, I, I, if you don't have it, it's, it's, this is what you read, and then it's items A through B.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, motion to approve the items listed on the curriculum and programming consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent.
Did you say items A through D?
Items A through D.
A second.
And then you asked if there was any discussion.
Yeah, is there any discussion? Thank you. Can we take it?
Lori Krasny?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Stat official?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Jennifer Hart?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, um, consent agenda for building, a motion carried.
It'll be a whole, whole hat next, next to you.
Consent agenda, um, for buildings and grounds and operations.
Uh, motion to approve the items listed on the buildings and grounds consent agenda, items A through B, as recommended by the superintendent, do you have a second?
I'll second, yeah.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grassi, any, any discussion?
Just to point out, this, this is one of the replacement projects that we discussed previously in building in the Bronx, and, um, we were to grant a due state term pricing to a vendor, and then have a legal, and then cut the mustard, so then, we delayed the project to this year, and now we're, uh, hoping to get moving forward and have opted, work contracts and get it bid before the next season.
Will they do that over the summer?
They'll do it over the summer.
We're halfway through winter, so, so far, so good.
The woodwork is still work.
Right.
Are, are you crossing your fingers every day?
Please do not discuss that.
All right, so, it just goes to show that we, we definitely, you know, need to move forward with this.
It's been a couple years, hasn't it? I remember-
They've, they've gone through several iterations of issues, but, but I think this is the, the way to move forward, to have a, an enduring solution. All right, any other discussion? Mr. Platko, will you call the roll, please? Tom Heck? Aye. Stat official?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Jennifer Hart?
Aye.
Lori Krasny?
Aye.
Motion carried. Do we have any updates from the Board of Education?
I think one thing you want to mention, too, just because Boiler Project is an expensive project, is the fact that if you look at the second phase of a facility plan we just approved, that the move, after all the phases are over, is the only building that would remain standing, so we are investing in the building, that we're not planning to take down should this levy pass.
In addition to reviewing, partial.
Right, yeah. Everyone, we don't want to take those down.
Thank you. Um, any updates from the Board of Education?
Yeah, I just, I, so the, the one thing that I would say, just to give everybody heads up, I, at one point, we had talked about, you know, having a work session just to get a debrief on the, on the, um, the audit that was done on the curriculum, and then so I will send an email around and, and just see if we can, sort of, time to, to do that, because I, I do think that that would be useful for us to get a debrief, so.
I appreciate you saying that, I literally drove here to tell myself, what was I going to say in new or old business, what was I going to say, and that is what I was going to say, so thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, we do need to get those work sessions started.
Terrific, and I'll, I'll, I'll start the chain, and if you can figure out the time that-
They'd be great, thank you.
I also would just like to ask if there's anything, um, with our upcoming boardmanship training at, before our next, um, board meeting on the twenty-fourth of February, if there's anything that we want to make sure that, um, Mr. McIntyre covers, so he's preparing those for that meeting, I just want to see if there's anything from the board's perspective that we do need to cover.
We're doing that right before our next board meeting.
Six o'clock on the twenty-fourth.
If I have it on my calendar, this is some good.
Is there anything specific, I know, I think you've mentioned, um, sunshine laws a little bit, you were diving into sunshine laws?
I think this is a good review for everybody, for sure.
I, all right, yeah, sunshine for sure, I, 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 I believe that we are getting terrific advice from, from Mr. McIntyre, uh, I've, I've had a chance to talk to some other new board members, and it would not appear that, in other districts, that, that they are as upfront and transparent as, as we are, and hopefully, we are living up to the law, and I think we are, uh, but, but not everybody does, so, so I really think that's, that's truly very important as part of our job.
I have asked Mr. Platko to put it on as a working session, because we believe there will be some good discussion between the board to make sure that we all are kind of having the same expectations, so.
One thing I forgot to mention during my update is, I did attend the public records training, it's a three-hour training as you're designated, which, for which I have attended every two years, because there's always, you know, every two years, new elections, I did go through the, the three-hour training again on that, and, you know, I'm pretty sure with the ins and outs, I got to answer any questions, field for your challenge.
Did you do that online?
I did it online.
Yeah.
It's a lot easier, because now you don't have to sit for the entire three hours, you can do twenty or forty minutes at a time, because each section's about twenty to twenty-five minutes long, so you can watch a section, you don't have to designate three hours straight through, which, you know, when you tend those seven hours in person, it can be, but, you can see, you can see, don't want to be in one fifteen to three, you're there for four hours.
Um, I, I, it, that is, that is one of the, a session that, dry as it may be, and while we delegate that to Mr. Platko as our treasurer and our district representative to do that, I highly recommend board members taking that, it's three hours, well-spent, I think, they, they delve into a lot of information, and it, it's, it's good stuff to know.
Ohio Longfires, every woman would take it once per term or designate someone to do it, so.
So, yeah, Gary's the lucky, lucky guy. Do you do it every year?
It's pretty much every other year, because there's always a new term, even if we're re-elected, it's a new term, and you have to go and do it again, so, every two years I practice, sit through the three-hour course.
I'll generally go and take it, because I get CPE credit for it, so, well, thank you.
I just had one, one more thing for the Board of Education update, just for anyone listening, that to make sure that for graduating seniors this year, that they're aware that, um, all of our scholarships are online now under the guidance stamp, so if there's, there's a lot with RLEF, and, you know, every year, we're always being surprised by the lack of, um, applications that we actually receive for our scholarships, and there are a lot of really great opportunities for all of our students, from students that are going into even vocational and trade, two-year colleges, four-year colleges, not all just limited to four-year college traditional scholarships, so I really, really encourage our parents and our seniors to get on our website and apply for those, because most of them are, the latest ones are due by end of April, we've got a couple that are due to end of March, so, it's time to get rolling on it if you're going to be applying for scholarships.
Any other? Then we'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session at nine o'clock.
Aye, second.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, for purchase or sale of property.
Aye, second.
Mr. Platko?
Stat official?
Aye.
Belinda Grassi?
Aye.
Jennifer Hart?
Aye.